Hello, hello, hello.
God bless you. Oh my goodness. You said, you said that you're gonna pack up. It's too long.
Did you look over this stuff? Did you have some ideas?
Okay. Well, I don't have, I think it's a good idea.
I'm saying anything you wanna add to this. Cause that's what we. Yeah, five days is, L O M A said that was a really good time. That's just like at the beginning of the week.
I would say at, at latest, three. I see, I don't know. Thank you, lady. Function. These was last, work last. We're about for calendar.
Uh huh.
Or you know, to, to do this.
Hey.
Hey.
Hi. It's Debbie. Let me get, uh, copy of this back.
How many?
It's those. I think it's six lives in there.
You said what happened? Something about work? Yeah, you have to have some kinda, uh, standard on where you're functioning.
Oh yeah. All is the procedure.
That's the checks.
Yeah.
And ensure things are getting.
Absolutely. I forgot, um, cause I definitely wanna, um, I actually, I've, um, get with you at the time too. So we could talk to Ms. Penny. Cause there's one particular question that I really want.
Yeah, let's do that, cause I have her number.
Oh, she is, yeah. And I didn't, I didn't, I started, uh, uh, uh. I'll call her tomorrow and see if what time.
Looks a good day time.
Yeah.
Okay.
But do you have your lunch break at different times?
I said from twelve to one every day.
Tw- okay. Hi, Mr. Martin.
How y'all doing?
Doing good, it's good, um, after that, good Monday.
Look like there's gonna be a lot of people show up here.
That's what it look like?
No, it does not. No, it does not.
Glad to see you.
Man, I wanna stay on top of what's going on up here. You'd think everybody else would come up here and see what's going on, you know?
Marcus?
Hey, sir, how are you?
I do well.
Good.
How are you?
Oh, it's going pretty good. Wasn't too bad for a Monday.
Perry?
Wasn't too bad.
Ms. Tammy? Feeling a lot better after all that cold and everything? You know, Ms., uh, Clark, she was thinking all that stuff about the same time you were.
Yeah, my daughter, um, came home with it and asked it on to me.
I don't know.
But, um.
You tell you didn't want it?
I did. They like staying in my face. That's them, this is my baby.
Baby, uh, uh.
Both of them.
No?
Yeah, they like being in my face.
Yes.
Under me, laying on the couch.
Hey, how are you, young lady?
I'm good, how are y'all doing today?
Good, how are you?
We're doing great. Hey, Ms. Tammy. Saw your books, didn't see you. Okay?
Hey, how you doing?
Good. Not hot, babe.
Turn that AC up a little bit. Well, damn, whatever when you do it, seventy two, seventy three.
I'm doing, I'm changing, I'm buying it. Cause I can, I can train, it's y'all right. In case you don't have from last meeting.
Oh yeah, I got that. Stephanie, you want this, you got it already, that's that audit thing that's on the front back, you got it? Ms. Lawrence won't be here.
Oh, you won't be here?
She's out of town.
Oh yeah.
Did you find your book?
Yes, it was, I got it, the audit book.
Right.
Yes, sir.
If y'all need more copies of that, you, you go to L L A dot state dot L A dot U S. And it's, uh, aligned, that's the workbooks for the insurance system where they post all that.
I'm at, yeah, bump that council meeting.
Good evening. How are you?
Hot and I'm tired, how about you?
Well, I'm not hot, I am tired though.
We got that warm part there.
Fourteen hours, a long day.
Oh yes, definitely.
Make sure it won't be the pins right. Have I got something to write with? We'll start early, but we got a couple more minutes before into that clock. The, uh, intern, you know, when we had the audit, the lady come up here and she gave us all those blue bullets?
Yes.
We still got yours. Somebody borrowed mine. So I had to be like Steph, I mean like Tiffany had to get a copy made like hers. Got one in my office.
Get the papers, got it out together.
It's, it's there.
Yeah.
Is there a code to the, um, tablets?
Ma'am?
Is there a code that we, um, need to get on the tablet?
No, we're not using it, you can get on it if you want to. I mean, you just had to hold that button down for a minute up at the top, the turn on button. You had to hold it on, right here, this one here, you had to hold it, hold it down.
It's asking you to enter a pin.
I don't know, but I think it's, uh, now I had to get, turn it on here. It's one, four, five, two. Then punch okay. Morning, Ms. Carl, I mean, get that clean.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I called the order of the work session, the meeting of the mayor and the board of August and the town of Benton on Monday, September the fifteenth, twenty twenty five at six thirty. Ms. Carl, will you call, roll call please?
Ms. Carl?
Yeah.
Ms. Manning?
Here.
Ms. Brunson?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
And Mr. Lawrence is back.
I need a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Ms. Manning makes a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Ms. Carl makes the second. Any public comments on the approval of the agenda? If it be done, we'll have roll call vote, a roll call, read, roll call vote please.
Ms. Carl?
Here.
Ms. Manning?
Yes.
Ms. Brunson?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
Here.
Yeah.
All right. We'll let the, uh, what we'll do tonight, we got three items on the list, so as we go down each one of them, uh, we'll have public discussion after we've made our discussion, in case they have a question or something about it from out there. All right, so item number one is the, uh, water system improvement project with Corin Maine. Now, now it asked me about, uh, other people to make bids and stuff on it. All right, according to the, the bid law, uh, unless it's over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's not required. And this is from the Baylor that works with that. And then the, uh, procedure on the back, uh, for the, uh, under RS thirty eight, two twenty one, two eight, all contracts for public work that see the contract threshold of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars must be advertised for bid and let the, let for contract with the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. The legislature auditor to recommend that the contracts for the public works valued at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less be administered through a request for proposal, R F P, process or solicitation of less than three bids, even though this statute does not require them to bid. So now, this is for Corin Maine. Y'all had already approved the, uh, tower situation for the communication. And now the, the equipment coming up for the, uh, communication with Corin Maine, y'all ask about other bids and stuff. So I called with them, the engineering group, and this is strictly an upgrade on the infrastructure, as I tried to explain to them that one night, or the last time we were there. So, and that, if you got any questions or any concerns about this, y'all have already had this sent to you, it's in your packets. Now, this is strictly for the upgrade and the, and this is where you've already authorized for the use of the three towers. And this is to put the equipment on there to improve the water system. Any comments on that, council?
Mayor, um, you said that Baylor gave you that, um,
Yeah, they got, yeah, it comes out of the open bid law.
Okay, we can, we can look it up since you didn't, you didn't provide it for us, but, um, that's what I want to make clear, that.
Yeah, yeah, it's in the bid law book.
Okay. I'm just, I'm gonna have to look it up. Is that, um, based on the town or is that based on?
It's on the public bid law revised oh eight, twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Page eleven of sixty five in the bid law book.
Okay.
Okay?
Just thinking somebody wants to look.
I don't know, but the, 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 the process of us trying to get our water system improved, y'all keep putting this off for some reason or another, and it's, and it's not helping the town at all, because it's for the infrastructure for the communication of the, uh, water system that's already in the ground.
Mr. Friday.
Yes, ma'am.
For lack of a better word, some phrases. What do you mean we keep putting it off? I mean, I mean, if we ask you a question during the meetings, you don't even have to answer us. If we had everything that we needed.
Well, I, I did, I told you it was for infrastructure last time, and, and then we.
And I asked you about a bid and you didn't even know. So we're not just putting it off to be holding up the title? As Alderman, we do, I would do diligence too.
Yes, ma'am. I, I understand what you're saying, but, but there again.
You're acting like it's us.
Okay.
You the mayor.
All right, but you're a council person.
Exactly, that's why I ask you questions.
All right, now, any public comments outside? All right, there are none. And so we will, uh, one other thing, uh, out of the course of the weeks that, that all this has been going on, I don't have any phone calls or anyone coming to the office to discuss any of these matters. All right, moving along to item number two. All right, now, this is for open discussion for all of us tonight, to see what y'all wanna do, and I've sent y'all, uh, a group text on what I thought we might wanna do, uh, if you guys want to, or ladies would like to. And I also have a, uh, this is on my water bill, uh, as far as current rates and what, what my water bill was. Now, on the current rates, now this is my current water bill, I used four thousand nine hundred and thirty six gallons of water. At six dollars and eighty nine cents current rate per thousand, it equal to three, thirty four dollars and, and one penny. Now, with the thirty four dollars and one penny plus the eight seventy five current flat fee, my price was forty two dollars and seventy six cents for my water bill. Now, with the new rates, if y'all wanna write this down, so you, with the four thousand nine hundred and thirty six gallons of water, the, the new rate would be seven dollars and eighty nine cents per thousand gallons, which would have been thirty eight dollars and ninety five cents, which is a difference of four ninety four. Now, at the thirty eight ninety five plus the new flat rate, my bill would have been fifty one dollars and eight cents. Now, we're, uh, been doing some studies on this thing here, so now if we leave the flat rate as it is currently, at eight seventy five, at seven ninety eight with the new water rate per thousand gallons, it would be thirty eight dollars and ninety five cents. So the thirty eight ninety five plus the eight dollars and seventy five cents flat fee, which is already current, my bill would have been forty seven dollars and seventy cents, an increase of three dollars and thirty eight cents for, for that month, and using almost five thousand gallons of water.
Um, the question I have, um, is why are we revisiting this when we've already had a workshop and we was ready to vote? So is there any changes?
We haven't voted on it. There's no changes, I'm just, y'all keep, we keep working on it because when y'all ask something or another, we try to come up with some ideas. I, we're coming up with the ideas, I haven't heard any of y'all come up with any new ideas on how to, what to do about the work, uh, the increase from Benton, I mean, from Bossier to us at all.
So what?
So we're, we're trying to figure out what we need to do. We're paying for the water, which is ninety seven cents, I believe it is, per thousand gallons. And so with that, uh, we will need the flat rate like it was, and then when, next time we have a meeting, we'll vote on what we need to do. Either increase the water or just let it go. And then right now, currently, we're, we're losing, if we, if we was to multiply this out, I forget how much money it is, it's about.
Mayor, let me ask you this question, um, because we don't have anything to look at. I, I'm not, you're reading.
Package.
You're reading off of that.
I'm reading off of my water bill.
Yeah, your water bill, you giving us projections based on your water bill. My question is, we've already discussed this, and you, you guys have provided us with the, um, the numbers. So what are we discussing it for tonight?
You have not made a decision.
Because we haven't had, and we haven't had a.
Make one tonight.
We haven't.
I'm not making one, not either, that's correct, it's just a workshop.
And, and we had the. We had the opportunity to have it on the, on this month's agenda, but we didn't. That's why we didn't vote on it. Let, let me make that clear. Cause this could have been on last month, I mean, this could have been on September's the eighth agenda, but it wasn't. And we're having another workshop on it based on what merit? What are you telling us different?
Okay, all right, there, there, a lack of understanding is the way I see it right now. So, I mean, we provide the numbers for you, we ask y'all to help us figure this out, and, and you, you keep throwing endos, endos at us as far as, well, what are we doing this for? Well, we're trying to explain to you why it needs to be done because of, the town operates on its water bill.
Well, we know that. The question is, the question is, so we won't, you know, get sideways from what we're focused on tonight is, is there anything different that you want to present to this board from what we were given in, um, August? Yes or no?
Yes, there is.
Okay, where is it? Because we don't have it.
You tell me.
We don't have it, mayor.
What do you mean you don't have it? You know, you've, you've got the numbers, we give you the numbers, and you, you, you don't get no response back to us about what we need to do. And y'all say, well, we need to discuss this, or we need to talk about it, we need to table it. So we did, and here we are again. Now, I'm trying to find out what the council wants to do.
We already had a workshop.
Okay, I agree with that, you've always said that. So now, what's, so what's your idea?
To be honest with you, I don't think we need a water increase.
Okay, well, then that's your opportunity, uh, when we have the council meeting. All right, so now, uh, any public discussion about this? Yes?
Our grabs eight sixty five, old blind in the road, Benton, Louisiana. Mayor, in last month's meeting, you stated there was twelve hundred and fifty, twelve hundred and fifty five water meters that y'all are estimating the bill every month. And you stated there was about, what, twenty five, twenty six hundred meters in the city limits of Benton?
Mm-hmm, it's something like that.
Okay. This deal that, that y'all wanting, uh, to pass with, with this company, and from what I.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, you're on something different now.
No, I'm talking about Baylor.
With that engineering group, but they, they, they have nothing to do with the water rate. We're talking about water rate right now. You're on something different. You don't have to stay with the, what we're on now, we're gonna pass that, we're on item number two, which is the water rates. So what, what, what's your comment on the water rates?
Okay. I'm gonna go and put it on record that we do not need a water rate increase at this time due to the economy, and everybody's struggling, including all of y'all and me and everybody out in the audience, to pay their bills, and these tariffs that President Trump has created.
They're gonna do our water bills now.
They're gonna cause everything else to go up, and that's the reason I'm, I wanna run it on record that I'm stating that I do not think at this time that we need a water rate increase.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Um, my comment is with the seven eighty nine per thousand gallon, is that what you were, is that what you are, um, presenting as an option?
With no flat rate.
With no flat rate?
No, no increase in the flat rate.
Okay, and so.
It just what the water, they charge us for the water is what we're willing to fight for.
Was it seven fifty, seven seventy five?
That's, that's what, that's what I'm trying to ask too, cause we don't have.
I didn't bring it, uh, with me, but I, I'm trying to recall that per gallon amount, or was it six? It's Stephanie, do you recall?
It's, um, six eighty nine.
Six eighty nine?
Yes.
I mean, it would just be, if we bringing this back to the board, it would just be nice if we had the numbers to look at. And, cause she, well, she didn't bring hers, I didn't bring mine.
I don't, I can't produce numbers other than what the town of Bossier sent to us.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking you to make up numbers. I'm asking you for a sheet for us to look at, like, if we could, like, we got this, if we had a copy to review tonight, since we're in a workshop, mayor, then it would be better. So my question is, now, what, what I hear you saying, the new proposal is you're not going to charge a flat rate. Is that what you're saying?
That's not what I said. Not gonna increase the flat rate.
We're not gonna increase the flat rate.
They take seventy five.
So the, okay?
Same.
All right, and so.
We're just paying for the water that we get.
And how much is that going to be increased to?
A dollar.
Yeah, ninety-seven cents, we rounded it off to a dollar.
Okay.
Why is this young lady here?
Because she wrote it down. Okay, I'm trying, I'm trying.
Right.
I'm trying.
So, let's just kill the hostility. Let's just kill it. We got to be professional, we got to be adults. Thank you. So, we are asking for understanding, just like Miss Stephanie had, you guys presented the numbers the last time. That's what we're looking for this time, because it was great. It was a great presentation. So, we could have it in front of us to see, not only for us to see, but the constituents could be able to see what, what you're saying. So, everybody has different learning styles, everybody's understanding this, this, like this. I, I'm writing it down because I'm trying to make sure that I understand it. So, in any, when you're wanting somebody to understand something, do what you can to make them understand it, and, and the presentation would be fine, of whatever you have. You're basing it off of what your water bill would be, yes, that's great. But just to have some numbers in front of us, that's, I think that's the bottom line, that's the point everybody is trying to make.
All right, this was, this, the thing was put on the website. I don't recall hearing a phone ringing at all about somebody saying they wanted this information in front of them, because we would have provided it for you. We would have provided anything that you asked for. We have been doing that, and we'll continue to do that. But, you already had this in your previous package, so...
No, not what you presented today. Not what you presented, and that's, that's what we're on tonight, what your, your option was for us, the increase of the dollar.
Well, my option was not to do the flat rate was all, I mean, it was all there. It had three, you know, it had the, last time, when we talked about the water increase and the flat rate increase covered from Bojor City, and we didn't discuss an option of trying to do something different. Nobody entertained the idea of doing something different. And so, I'm trying to bring this up again, so that the idea is, we leave the flat rate alone, we don't touch it. And then, all we do is charge the dollar, or it's ninety-seven cents, I believe it is, for the town of Bojor per thousand gallon water, what they charge us, because we gotta pay for that water. And that was, that was the only thing that I wanted to do tonight, was put that whole option out there to, so that y'all would have time to think about between now and the next time, and then you could call us and ask about it whenever y'all have time.
So, from my understanding, thank you, Ms. Perry, um, from my understanding, we weren't going to charge the public. I don't, I don't have that tonight, because I thought we was gonna get some more information, and I'm up here looking for it in my package. So, from our last minute, our last...
We'll send it to you.
Please, please, let me finish.
All right, well, y'all cut me off, I'll cut you off. All I'm saying is, you will get the paperwork.
That's okay. I'm, I'm done.
We have...
That's it.
We have got to do better.
I'm done.
We have got to do better, y'all. This is ridiculous. We have got to do better. We not gonna do tit for tat, we're too grown and too mature for that.
Exactly.
Let's just listen and hear each other out. Listen, let me, let me apologize. If you ever felt offended for being cut off, Mayor, we respect your position and who you are. Please, let's just do it as adults would do it, professional.
All right, any public comment about this, about the water rate?
Just a question, or kind of a comment, a question.
Okay.
Dawn Bushnell, five twenty-three Lee Street, for those that don't know me, anyway. Because I was here months ago when we went over the, I guess, um, the twenty-four numbers, because the water department was, in twenty-three, they went in the hole, twenty-four, they went in the hole. So, is any of this amount gonna keep or prevent the water department from going in the hole this year, possibly? This increase, will that help that any at all?
As many blowouts as we have, I mean, I don't know if anybody's been by the courthouse, there's a whole new line put in down there. I think I've got a thirty thousand dollar bill to come from Pullitt, from, uh, working on four different water sections of town here in the last month.
Because I know that the CPA that was here that went over the audit suggested a five percent increase to the water bill every year for the next five years. And she said that wouldn't even catch up to us not being in the hole annually, so I'm just trying to hear. So, is everyone else aware of that? I mean, I know everyone up here should be, but if everyone else...
She didn't have her book, she was absent at night, and she has the audit book there in front of her now.
Because, you know, I mean, for me, I'm a numbers person, and just wondering, instead of somebody blatantly saying we should increase the water rate five percent every year for the next five years, I understand that things are going up, but also, there's always a way to try to, can we look at how we can cut some expenses, that we don't have to do this every year for the next five years, because, you know, I don't get a pay raise every year, and I saw you don't get a five percent. I don't, the city of Bojor, we don't, municipal employees, we don't get a raise.
Yeah, I understand. Well, with, with, with the, with the aging of the pipes and stuff, we never know when there's gonna be a blowout. We never know with the changing of the tip, we had, um...
So, is there a fund somewhere?
Just letting out of the ground, because of our ground, we've got pipes that even separate, we have still some old clay pipe in there.
But, do you have money set aside in emergency funds to try to help cover some of that when it happens, or? Each year that you plan, and, I mean, I don't know in your budget.
We budget money back for all of this stuff.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I didn't know, like I said, that was just my question, because, you know, a lot of people in the town...
Well, we budget money back for the water sectors, we budget money back for the roads, because we got potholes that need to be fixed and stuff that, we're, we're an asphalt town, we don't have concrete roads like everybody else.
Well, and I just don't, within the town limits, is, you know, but us individuals, we make the least amount of money probably in seven one zero zero six zip code. So, it's a concern of trying to make sure of where we're headed, you know, that sort of thing.
You're correct.
And it just, it bothered me that night that she made the comment about the five percent, but it seemed, it kind of... Yes, she did. It came across a little flippant. And I know you explained the issues with at the end of the water lines and such, and I know you have other things that weren't discussed that night that you know about.
Right, and, and we're running a town, and you work in the town hall up there, you know that it gets complicated and it runs into a lot of big numbers.
Oh, it does, yeah.
So, we, we're trying to operate and run this town, and we've already had an alderman come up here twice to go through the books and stuff, and has not found anything, or anything, and now they're gonna, she's wanting to do a third time, so we're just hoping the books are there to look at. So, we, we will, you know, provide it to look at.
Yes, sir. I was just concerned, like I said, about that comment that was made, I guess, at the June meeting or something. She'd come in to talk about the audit for twenty twenty-four and those numbers, so, you know.
And we're in twenty twenty-five now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, she brought up a question for me, in that discovery of the, the water issue, is there, did she give us any suggestions? Help me remember.
Yeah, she said...
On what area to kind of...
Oh, no, not, 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 not for the...
Okay, is there someone that comes in and does that?
Yes, there, yes, the Louisiana, the, uh, L, oh, it's the Northwest Rural Louisiana Association.
Louisiana Rural Water Association.
Yeah, that's it. They come in every five years and do a, a water analysis.
Okay.
And, uh, report. And then, I think we got another one coming up here before the end of the year is out.
What is the program line right now for the...
Is it for the sewer or for the water?
It's on the sewers because of the funds that we're getting.
Okay, yeah. Because of, you know, because we're trying to build this new lift station to increase our sewer situation, to remove the water and send it out to the, to the river, we're being audited again on the sewer situation.
Okay, so, Miss Stephanie, if, if we, we said, um, what are some other areas that we could decrease to make sure that we don't go in a hole in the water area, would, would you be able to answer that, or would that be from a different firm?
No, that would be, we, we need to schedule a budget meeting.
Okay, that's what that, okay.
And we did get a finding, um, another audit finding was the budget. So, we did get a finding for the budget as well.
And I just wanna make it clear too, that I don't think we're going, in the hole is the right terminology, because we're not, we have, um, revenue coming in, so I don't think that, Ms. Perry, I don't think that we will ever be without revenue coming into the water department funds, so...
No, it has, it has money coming in, there's no doubt, there's money in the town, but your budget, your, over your budget numbers, twenty-three was forty thousand and twenty-four was eighty-something thousand dollars. So, yeah, for just the one sitting here, I, I don't know what all the expenditures are, so I'm just asking questions.
Oh, yeah, I was just letting her know that, I mean, we're not gonna go in a deficiency.
No, but it's, that's an, it's an extreme amount building.
Well, one large catastrophe could put you, could put you out of business completely.
Yes. It can to any individual in the home, I mean, that's kind of why we're all talking about this.
Absolutely, yeah. You only get a certain amount of money to come home, and everything else keeps going up, and then, and when you can't repair your home, you can't do nothing at all, except leave it like it is. All right, anybody else got more comments on the water rates? Not being any, then we'll move along to item number three. This is Alderman Manning's proposed ordinance to establish a policy for the delivery of council pa, uh, packets. Now, before I open the floor for a council discussion, I'd like to point out that there's five days out from the meeting, it's going to push a few things back about a month, according to, uh, our books and stuff, so, Ms. Collier, our town clerk, will come up here and explain, and then after she speaks, then we will talk to the council about discussions.
Okay. First, I want to, uh, clear up the, the assumption that there were water rate documents to go in this package, which there were not, because I remember the ordinance that was presented with the rate increase was rejected. And then, we had a workshop on it, and after doing the minutes, I didn't hear any input from the council as far as other ways of doing it. Everybody knows it was eighty-six cents on the per thousand gallons, and they were increasing us by three dollars.
Mayor, are we on, are we on? Mayor, are we on number three? Because you told...
Number three, but you questioned something that was missing from the packet, and you stated publicly in a premature assumption that there was documents missing from the packets, and there was not, is what I'm trying to explain.
Mr. Mayor.
Please don't interrupt me.
Mr. Mayor.
You talk about being interrupted.
Okay.
So, are we on number three?
Yes, but she's an exception to the rule. She is the town clerk. Now, the reason why is because...
Now we know, thank you.
No, you don't know.
Now we know.
No, you don't.
You just told us.
She's trying to explain some things that y'all asked some questions about.
Why didn't she explain what we were talking about there? We're, we're somewhere else now.
No, it had to do with council packets, the fact that it was stated publicly that I did not put something in the council packet for this meeting, and I was clarifying that there was no documents to put in the council packet for this meeting. Now, addressing the ordinance, you're stating that you want it five days out from the date of the meeting, correct? Five calendar days for the meeting, that would put it on Wednesday before the meeting. Am I right?
It just said five days, and so...
You had five calendar days from the meeting, that would put it on Wednesday, correct?
Like five business days?
So, five business days, it would be Monday through Friday?
No, you didn't say workdays, you said calendar days.
Oh, okay, we can change that, because this is not confirmed, so we can't say workdays.
I don't know if y'all realize, but the MPC has their meeting on the Monday before ours. They have their meeting Monday night. She, that gives her Tuesday, and to the end of the day, Wednesday, to get me the documents from the MPC meeting. And then, I have Thursday to write ordinances and resolutions, because every action that comes before y'all from the MPC has an ordinance or a resolution attached to it. So, that is why Thursday evening at the latest is the best we can do for council packets. MPC, if not, those people's items would be pushed back a whole nother month, and I don't think any of us want to go there, because those people, it's very controversial what they're forward to begin with, and knowing that they were gonna be pushed back another month would be awful.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, Miss Stephanie, but let me ask you this, if you don't mind. You have an assistant, so, if we get, if we get the, the packages on five business days, normally, we, we don't get them until Friday, uh, but last time, we got them Thursday, we did, we got them Thursday. So, basically, that's just three days, you know, of what we're asking you to do. Like, I'm not sure what Ms. Debbie do, but she is your assistant, so surely, you know, with your assistant, you know, she can assist you in, you know, in getting us the package.
So, how is she gonna assist the MPC when they have their meeting on Monday, but y'all want packets on Monday? How is she gonna assist them in getting their stuff to us?
To be honest with you, Stephanie, we're... I understand, I wouldn't want your job, and I told you that before.
No, no, I don't think anybody in this room would want my job.
You know, as, as, you know, as this council, when we get our packages on, on Friday, well, y'all don't even work on the weekend, so what make y'all think that on the weekend, that we want to sit down and go over a bunch of stuff?
I usually have it to y'all by noon on Friday. That's thirty hours prior to the meeting, not counting the weekend. And then, you have all day Monday to look at it, or on a Saturday or Sunday, I mean, it's...
I don't work.
I don't know how to explain it to y'all.
Ms. Manning worked, and I, I don't know about Ms., um, Ms. Jordan, but I think that she worked. So, I just think it's just, I mean, even if not five days, surely, we can get it on Wednesday or, or something, but getting it on Friday, it's just...
Okay, well, then, I'll, I'll talk to Carlotta and ask her to get it to me on Tuesday. And then, Wednesday, by the end of the day, I'll compromise, and we can have council packets by then.
So, how often do you do MPC ordinance and resolutions? How often?
Well, if you haven't noticed, we've already had six ordinances this year for MPC, so it's always a toss of the coin as to whether or not they're gonna have a lot of stuff or a few things. I mean, it's just whatever they have on their agenda.
Can you...
But I have to have time to write the ordinances and resolutions accordingly for their items to present to the council.
To, to submit to the MPC council?
No, the MPC, when they make a decision, they're a recommending body. And if someone is changing the zoning on a piece of land, or wanting to construct something, a business, or whatever the situation, they have to amend the zoning. That's, once they decide on that, that there's no issues with it, they make a recommendation to us. It goes, gets written into an ordinance format, because it's all amending the zoning ordinance, the zoning code, by changing that, that swatch of land from one zoning category to another. And it has to come to y'all for consideration to be introduced one month, and then it takes another month before it's set for public hearing and adopted, or not adopted, either way it goes, but...
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
That, those people sometimes have a process of, a timeline of when they've got contractors planned and this and that. And so, the, the order of it is, the MPC does that, they have to do the zoning, then they have to come back and get approval for the buildings.
So, it's not every month? It's not every month?
It's not every month.
Correct, okay, all right.
That is our timeline that we've had with MPC, for them to have their things to us in a timely manner to get it to y'all.
Right, but it's not every month, and like Ms. Paul was saying...
My feet to the fire for Wednesday... Feet to the fire for Wednesday, that, that could be done Wednesday evening, that could be done. That just shorten their time span.
We appreciate it.
So, they usually get it to you on Tuesday?
No, she usually gets it to me by Wednesday, cause their meetings at night, she has Tuesday to prepare her side of the documents, and then gets it to me. Wednesday, I write the ordinance, the resolution, and put it on the agenda.
But that's only one we have.
Right.
It's not, that's not a common thing.
Okay.
It, it is a common thing, it just is not every single month.
Okay, and so Wednesday would be your day to get it written up and everything's.
I could get that done on Wednesday and get it to y'all Wednesday evening.
But what's your usual day?
The usual day is Thursday or Friday. Because I usually spend Thursday writing ordinances and resolutions, if there are some, like, I think it was the February meeting, we had. Think four ordinances for the MPC for zoning changes, because one of them was denied for that. Office building over there, they wanted to turn into apartments.
Minus, um, let's say MPC meetings doesn't, well, they have a meeting, but there's no changes that need to take place. Is your, your, um, schedule remaining the same?
Fine, Wednesday's fine. If for some reason they overload me with ordinances or something, then I will notify the council. And let y'all know that it might be late according to Thursday.
That's fair.
We, we, uh, also, uh, we pay the MPC half of their salary and just basically. In Bowser Parish.
We pay for their, half of their stuff, yes.
And then, so, they have, they just went there going through a budget stuff, and then we'll have to put that into our budget. Between now and, and, uh, November, so we can present it to the state.
What, in the budget, I'm sorry?
MPC. Their, their, their wages and stuff that we pay them. We, we have to pay them, a- a- and we pay half of their wages and half of their. Business utilities and stuff, Bowser Parish Police Jury pays the other half.
Okay, but that doesn't affect what we're discussing for his schedules?
Well, no, it doesn't affect the schedule, wh- uh, the only reason why I'm saying that is, they do work for us. And, and they, they've hired some more people to, to do more, because the, the. There's an explosion going on around here in Bowser Parish as far as growth, and we're trying to be part of it. And it, and we need to be part of it, because they gonna be coming this way, uh, as far as. Uh, we're gonna have a new five hundred homes put in over here, we're gonna have maybe another thirty-five up here on one sixty-two. Uh, we've gotta run water lines of that away and sewer lines, uh, down one sixty-two, and we got a, uh, crossover from. Uh, Palmetta back over towards, going through, uh. Lost Rivers and coming over here to get over here by Brookshires, and then come and build a new lift station. And then from the new lift station up to the old lift station there at the courthouse, and from there over to the Rock Reed. So, there's, there's a lot going on, and there's a lot of. Things that she has to do, that I have to do all during the day, that no one else can, can. Can deal with because they, they're not authorized to do so. You know, where other people in, in other community or municipalities have, like Bowser City, they have several clerks to do a lot of things in the same area. You know, they have a purchasing agent, they have somebody to work over the maintenance department, I mean, uh. I, I forget what, uh, Ms. Dawn does, I think she's some kind of bookkeeper or does something. Payroll, okay, and how many people you got in your payroll department?
Today, seven hundred and dollars.
People or? I mean, that's how many people you got working for you?
No, I have seven or nine employees that I issue their payroll.
Yeah, how many people you got in your payroll department? Just you?
Each department, each individual department has what's called a timekeeper, but that's part of one of their many tasks that they do. An administrative person and building maintenance will do many things, but she'll also submit time to me, but then from there, I'll process payroll.
And, and we don't, we don't have that, that luxury of having that kind of employees, cause we don't, we're not that big of a town, and we don't have that kind of income. Coming in to, to do this type of operation, so Stephanie does, I would say. At least eighty-five percent of everything now that, uh. With everything that goes on and, and people being trained to do this type of work and stuff, it's, it's not easy, working to connect. I wished I was back in the construction world where it was a lot easier than this, isn't it, this double, this slow. You gotta run back and forth all the time with stuff.
Under section two definition. I mean, if you have any, um, questions, Ms., um, Tammy or anyone. Um, on, on the last bullet point, we can take our outline, because we're, um. The council members to do their duties, we need a detail of the financial expenditure.
On the front of the page?
Section two, under definition.
Oh, under definition, okay, who you wanna take out?
Bullet point four, instead of an outline on the expenditures, we need a detail of the financial expenditures. From each, from the last regular meeting. Because when I was looking at the, um, I don't know if anybody else have this problem, but I know when I'm looking at the expenditure report. All of the monthly reports under each category is not identified on the expenditure report. And so, just like, for example, with the miscellaneous, it, just like with the. Water bill or whatever, if you got the month of August, and then you paid the month of, uh, um, September. It, it literally shows Sep- uh, August, September, well, under the miscellaneous, it's just a fee. I mean, a charge, so say if it's two dollars, well, that two dollars just encompassed miscellaneous. It doesn't say that the water was walled out of this, the, in the pen, this pen was purchased, so. The detailed financial expenditures, we need so that it, we can, it can allow us to just track. Where the, um, expenditures are coming from, so instead of having outline there, um.
Detailed though.
Yeah, instead of outline, it's just a, a detail of the financial expenditures, and we can take outline out.
So.
Anybody else have?
Miniatures, those were not detailed enough, cause I don't think we had any miscellaneous stuff.
They, yes. It wasn't, it wasn't identified.
Okay, well, I'll be sure to identify that one, but everything else was pretty detailed, wasn't it?
No. We hadn't gone over the, um. We didn't, uh, we didn't approve the agent, um, the financials because we didn't have it.
You've had a chance to look at them since then, so what other detail would you like on the expenditures? Because, so I can have that. Let me know what detail is missing.
Okay, Stephanie, like, like women, I'm just, I'm asking only for me.
I got you.
Um, this was like under August one, and we didn't approve that one either, so when I got a chance to, you know, to like. Go back over it, I saw, um, a charge, it was, uh. Over a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And so, that was on the ex- expenditure, and I just wanna think that, you know, a large amount like that. And it didn't really look like to me that it was even budgeted, so what was that charge for?
That one particular thing was. The truck, police truck to Jerry Lane, that. Steve had brought me a invoice for the truck and the delivery fee, which was seventy-two thousand. Six hundred and some dollars, the delivery fee was five hundred, so I cut the check for the full amount. No, 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 it's one vehicle, I'm explaining it, the, he came and got the check, and proceeds to tell me, no, the delivery fee has to be separate. So, I voided that check and issued a second one. With the delivery, delivery fee separate, even though it was going to the same people, it was, had to be separate. Um, so, that is one of the journal entries that has to be, cause I voided that first check. It doesn't take it out of that balance sheet, I don't know why, because this whole side of the finances is new to me. I've not always been involved with that part of it, so I don't understand why it doesn't deduct it out of that. But that's something that has to be journalized out, but it really is supposed to be seventy-two thousand.
So, not a hundred and forty-five thousand?
That was.
And the, and that wasn't on the expenditure report?
Month before last is why.
That's what she was talking about?
Yeah, it was on there the month before last for Jerry Lane was the company. Started with a G, Jerry Lane, um, that was the.
Saying on the expenditure report, I'm talking about, you know, I'm talking about August, so.
Yep.
When, um, that amount, it was not on the, on that expenditure report.
Okay, well, then, I don't know, it must have been the month before that.
When was the truck purchased?
Can't remember. It was on July's expenditures.
Why was it in the August, um. Um, balance sheet back there?
Because it's gonna show up, everything that's done throughout the year is gonna add up in that year-to-date column. What you're seeing is the year-to-date column. Um, when it's in the month today, when it's in the first column. That's, the expenditures were made at the time that you're getting that expenditure report, anything in the first column for the month to date. That's what we spent in the previous month that you're getting the reports for.
Yeah, I know that, I know that the, the stuff that we get in August, I know that it's for July.
Yeah, okay, well, I just was like, you know, but the, that one, that particular one, that was, it's in the year-to-date column.
But it's not on the expenditure report.
Because it was purchased in July, and it was in the July expenditures.
I'm looking at the July expenditures.
July, that's August.
Okay, that was August, let me pull the July one. Okay, and then, um, also, for example, since you want one, um, the month to date for the building maintenance. Which the mayor stated that we would not be using any more funds out of that. We still have a one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-four cents, and that is not on this expenditure report. It's not on the expenditure report, cause I don't see that code matching in it, this number that's coming out of here, so that's why we're. We're asking, the board is asking for a detail, whatever month to date is spent. Should be on the expenditure report, so we can refer back to.
Can you show me after the meetings, what you're talking about, because I can't. Show me after the meeting, and I'll look it up, I can't remember.
The, the point is, it needs to be on the expenditure of the report, that's what we're, okay, that's what we're talking about, though.
That's August, and that's a July report.
Either way, it's not on there, I know, I know that, but, cause I got all this. Mixed up. Regardless, it's not, it's not on there, so the point is, the point is for us to have. It on the expenditure report.
Everything is on there, there's nothing that is left off. July balance sheet and the August expenditures, they're not gonna match.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I know that, um, I don't have it all together, cause I was looking at something else. But I don't have it all together, however, again, we. We just want the expenditure report to match the month to date.
Just get the, like, July, the August balance sheet and go back and look at it.
Okay. Cause I have it here. So, that's on the, um, ordinance, and if we can have that.
Before I can rewrite the ordinance, I need to get a few things clarified, um.
So, this says July. Let her clarify.
No, I'm talking to myself.
Okay, I need clarification from you and Ms. Manning. On your, your proposed ordinance, you state on, uh, section four, the content requirements. You say each council package shall include a minimum, a complete agenda for the upcoming meeting, got that. Detailed draft minutes for the immediately preceding council meetings, regular, special, got that. And then the reports of financial expenditures incurred since the last council meeting included, okay, that's not a problem. But she lists out general fund disbursements, department, departmental expenditures, and I'm assuming that's for the general fund. And outstanding obligations and encumbrances. Um, do we not wanna include the water sewer or nineteen-seventy-eight fund? Balance sheets in that also?
So, um, we can put the general funds, like the ones that you already give. The general fund, the water sewage fund, the. The tax. And what else you already give?
Well, I always give the expenditure list, the general fund, water sewer, nineteen-seventy-eight sales tax fund. The encumbrances are on the balance sheet, but the outstanding balances, can you please ex- clarify what? Outstanding obligations that you're wanting listed, is that what you're talking about, you want them listed?
So, it seem like this will be a duplication to section two?
I don't know, I didn't write this.
I'm saying with what my requests are, cause it says general fund, disbursement, departmental, um, expenditures. And that's the same thing as the financial expenditures, so.
And you didn't the other, so I was just making sure you still want those included.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think all that you usually include, needs to be included, yeah.
Just clarifying it for, and then outstanding obligations, not really sure what you're asking me for there. You don't understand, there's a long projection of outstanding obligations, are you talking about for the month that we're referring to at the time?
The month that we're referring to at the time, because I know, just like you just said with the, um. And it was another thing too, just like you just said with the refund, I mean, not the refund, that you cut a check and then. You had to.
Journal it.
You mean the, the needed journal entries, or what do you?
Okay, so what did you say about the, uh, vehicles, cause you said it wasn't a hundred and sixty-five? You said it wasn't a hundred and forty-five? Okay, yes, that's what I'm saying, like, usually that would be on, I, I know, let me just say this, in the past. That would be on the expenditure report, and I think you asked, cause. It has been on, on different ones, yes, um, and then it was another. Uh, I can't remember what it was, but, oh, it was the insurance with precision collision. You stated, well, it was insurance, but it wasn't on, it wasn't on the, um, expenditure. It wasn't on your expenditure. All right, so, um, let me ask you this, this seven thirty-one, this is for July, right?
Um, look at the very last page, because the date that it's printed is not necessarily the date. The ending date down there on the back page is the criteria for the report.
Could you come and see? So, now that's. Is that July's? Yeah, okay, and this is July's right here? Is, is that, this not for the prior month, so this right here, okay. Because I know when we were getting it. These, these expenditure reports, they were from the prior, the prior month, they're not no more?
That, that was the expenditure report given to y'all at the last meeting, which y'all have still got to.
Cause we're in September, okay, I'm sorry, we're in September, yes, 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 yes. Cuz we're in September, okay, I'm sorry, we're in September, yes, 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 we're in September. I think we're in August, my bad.
Can I, can I ask a question here between the two of them all of y'all together? Would it be feasible or, or appropriate for you guys to, uh, to have a, a workshop that goes over this, where it's, it, it's sit down at, at a round table out there and y'all can point out, because all the workshops are usually whenever I was in here, we always just sat out there, all the councils and everybody, we just sit around the table out there. And, and just had us a, a pile while doing, so we could mark and show what we're looking at instead of running back and forth so that, and then, uh.
I think that's a great idea, I think that we should, that will help us to not have so many questions.
Well, I mean, we've had it before where, uh, when Shanta used to work for us, she'd come up here and gave you all the codes and everything, so everything that she needed and stuff. So, um, cuz like, like tonight, you kind of. Uh, what do you think, Ms. Perry? Would you be, uh, willing to do something like that? Ms., uh, Carr?
That's a great idea.
And you, as being the teacher.
I think we should not just do that, but we should go over the public bid law, the local government budget act, the Larson Act, and go back through all that for everybody.
Should, should we do this, uh, at, at a nighttime session, or should we?
I'm not gonna be available during the day, unfortunately.
Well, no, I was thinking maybe, you know, if, if you're interested enough in, in doing this, we, we could probably do it on a Saturday morning to, to one or two o'clock or something like that, if y'all are, if so, if I'm to.
I'll be available.
I mean, it's just a suggestion, I'm just throwing it out there, so this, cuz this would, you know, in order for all of us to understand and get where we need to be, we need to sit down at a table where we can have coffee, pooties and talk about it. As, as Ms. Perry said, because we, we've gotta figure this out, so that, so that all of us can get along and do what we need to, because we're getting mixed questions and answers, and it's just, it's, uh, it's not helping us all.
Here's an example, Stephanie. Sure.
Alright, do we have any other questions or concerns, or now, on this ordinance thing here, I don't know.
Are you done?
Uh, I, I guess y'all need to put some pencil down to your thoughts about what you think, how, which, how it would work, and then, and then we throw it in a, in a bowl and stir it up, see what we come out with, so hopefully we get a, get a good keg mix and get some icing on it.
You're talking about the ordinance?
Yes, ma'am, the ordinance that we talked about tonight, yes, ma'am. What you think we should do, or how you think you would, how you would do it, now, being, being that that Stephanie's already told you that we, MPC meets on a Monday night, and then we meet the, the following Monday. So, it, it, you know, and then, i- it's a time situation there between what they do, and remember, there's a lot of things going around, Bossier, and, and, and the MPC, I don't know, Ms. Perry, if you know or not, they, they work five miles outside the city limits all the way around, so anything that goes on in the town and outside, they, they conduct, and then they, uh, work out the permits and the things, and try to make it easier on us, so that when it comes to us, we're able to uh, either say yeah or no.
Well, I think Stephanie already said that she can have it to us. I'm speaking for me, Wednesday will be fine with me.
Wednesday would be fine for, with me too, and then, um, on section four, Stephanie, did we clarify that um, outstanding obligations?
Uh, not really.
Okay, like, so if there's.
Any changes? Is that what you're talking about, like if a check's voided?
Yes, if a check's boarded, if it was, well, you guys said it was on there with the insurance. It was on the expenditure report, I could have missed it, um, so. Okay. Just outstanding expenditures? Does that make sense? If it don't, let me know, because we don't, we can take it out before we do the ordinance. Yeah, we don't have, I don't, we, do we have, where, where's the balance sheet, cuz I don't see one. Which one is it, so we can know?
The balance sheet for the general fund, it shows us the liabilities that.
Oh, it, it don't show what the town owes.
Look, that's hard to say.
Oh, I'm just going by what she said.
That come through that month
That's like some of our contractors, they don't bill us for, for sixty days or ninety days out, then they send us all the bill invoices at one time.
Every single vendor, I, I mean, I don't really know what.
Can you pull up a purchase order report or something like this, unpaid, or do you use purchase orders?
We use purchase orders, but I don't know if, if, you mean, if there's anything that's unpaid for that month that we're providing expenditures for.
Yes, yes, yes. Absolutely, that's, thank you, Ms. Dawn, for clarifying that up, cuz.
So, just so I'm clear, everything that's not paid for September, that's what you would, that's what you were asking for?
That we will be able to see.
Was not paid.
And outstanding invoices for the month that y'all are getting the reports for that are unpaid, correct?
Correct. So, does everything else look, um, feasible on the ordinance board members, Ms. Tammy, you have any? Input? Okay, so, um, my last question is, um, well, this, it says that, uh, physical mail or courier to the member's official address and/or secure electronic transmission, so, do we need to ask for the packet to be delivered to our homes?
They have to be handled by the police officer, because that's what the state of Louisiana law. They can't, they can't leave mail through the mail, or nobody would ever get their packet.
Okay, so, so, that's what I'm saying, sh- should we mark that one out and just say carrier? Police, by a police officer?
So, Stephanie, we're not gonna get them through the, uh, our emails anymore?
I could put that in there as an alternative, and if y'all choose to do it that way, then, and everybody agrees, then we can do that. It, it doesn't matter to me, it's easier to do the electronic, but paper is what I've been used to for eighteen years, so I mean, it's not.
That's fine, I prefer paper anyway, cuz I can, you know, mark through with highlight, so I'm not, that's fine.
I don't have access to the email, I'm, I'm hitting and missing it all.
My email is right here, it's not working.
It's up here, but if I try to access it at home, I, I don't know if it's.
And they set it up through Outlook on our computers and.
So, do we need to keep, um, and/or secure electronics, um, transmission, do we need to keep that in there as an option, okay? Okay. I was just looking over this one last time, just to make sure, okay. Thank you. And I don't have all my packet stuff in order, I really don't. I need to get this in order.
Do we have any comments from the audience, uh, about the, uh, packets, anything, any questions from anyone? Alright, sir.
Stephanie said the, uh, police officers deliver the packets to the council members. I'm on, and I don't know if they're doing that or not, uh, I think that, just my opinion, uh, maybe security reasons, they need, when the police officer, uh, delivers the packet to the council members, I think the officer needs to write the date and the time down that he delivered it to the council person. I wanna make sure, I didn't know if they were doing that or not.
Uh, they do. If you're not there, they'll write down not at home.
And I've asked if I'm not at home for them to just leave on, and they could just like write my name.
That's the way they've been doing it ever since I've been around town. Alright, any more comments from the council or from the public, if not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Friday, before we adjourn, I, I wanna, I wanna say something. Ms. Perry, I, I, I agree with you. You know, we, we're gonna have to find, figure out a better way, you know, to talk to one another. In my nine years sitting here on this council, I've only been under one mayor, and that was Mayor Horne. I never saw him be disrespectful. I've never saw him get small with, you know, anybody in the ordinance. Um, if I had something to ask him, I never felt afraid to call him. And, and, and in those nine years, we all have not agreed. But he just was, he was accommodating, I mean, it was, it's all, I'm gonna apologize to you, and me and you, we have had this conversation, and I have told you, you know, that we don't, it's, you know, it's a better way, and I told you that if it was something that I would call you, but Mr. Friday, we are all adults up here, so, if you forgive me, for lack of a better word, if you talk crazy to me, that's the response you're gonna get, so I would, I would really prefer if we all show respect. Don't just expect it out of the council, it starts with you, you are the leader, you are the mayor. So, so if you want us to respond to you in a different way, then respond to us in, in the same way, because I promise you, I'm, I'm, anybody that know me, I don't get out of character, I mean, I just don't, that's not my nature at all. And there's nobody that has else in this council since I've been here that would ever tell you that I was disrespectful, ever, because that is not me, and I'm going to stop letting you get me out of character. But, I apologize. For me and you, we, me and you have had this conversation between us several times. And I have told Stephanie, when, when, when I sit on this board, it's not personal, this is business. So, I think we need to start taking like personal out of it, because it's business. When I ask something that's on this agenda, I'm not trying to attack Stephanie. Stephanie's just not that important to me, neither are you, I'm asking something because I wanna know, and it's important for me, that's it. Besides sitting here on this council, I only speak for me, I don't have extra conversation with Stephanie, Ms. Manning, Ms. Bronson, Ms. Perry, Mr. Lawrence. My, my relationship with you all is strictly business. Council business, the town of Benton business, so if I ask you something, and if you don't know, just say it, there's no harm in not knowing everything, I ask because I don't know. That's it, so, I apologize for being rude, but that is so not like me. So, I'm gonna try to change the way I respond to you, but I would suggest that you do the same. Again, council members, I apologize.
I did what Ms., um, Carr has said, um, my intentions is to serve the town of Benton and our constituents. And I don't want a contentious relationship with the mayor, with you, Mr. Mayor, either, um, but like Ms. Carr said, and Ms. Perry so, said, that we are all adults and we need to respect each other. And so, um, I too will apologize, and I too will control my emotions, cuz I can't get emotional, um, concerning what's going on, but I just think that this disrespect both ways need to be addressed, and you as our leader, we're gonna follow, we're gonna follow your, your way, but when we have questions, we are just doing our jobs.
I appreciate that, and, uh, and again, you know, as I've spoken with you on the phone several times, since you're the only one that's ever called and spoke with it, Ms. uh, Bronson has come up here and spoke, uh, and, uh, we've had some congenial feelings that I expressed, and, uh, you know, if I, the, the ins, indoor windows that, that come at me from different people, from the audience, or wherever it may come from. Because I personally apologize for anything that I may say or act or do, but my nature, from where I come from in a construction world, is so much different than if that's what I said earlier, if I can go back to that world, that'd be great. But, dealing with, uh, the, the town, and we got so much going on in the town, and it's frustrating, uh, not only to me and to my clerk, to keep these, everything in order, you know. Uh, I, I, I went to town today, and a lady asked me, she says, we never have the mayor come here and take care of this kind of business. I said, well, I'm trying to do what I have to do to get things done in town, and so, uh, with all that being said, I do apologize, and I hope that everybody continually, uh, understands that I, I have no intent to harm. My best concern is for this town of Benton, and it's always been about Benton, it's never been about me or anything else, it's always been about Benton, Louisiana.
And Stephanie, in, in the nine years that I've sat here, me and you, we have never had words. When you and Mr. Friday came to my house unannounced, I, I invited you all in, and we had a conversation. And it's just like the minute you all left, we just threw that conversation out the door. I told you that it's not personal, it is business, Stephanie, we never had had any hard words spoken between us, so I'm not really sure what type of time you on with all of this.
I don't know what you're talking about, threw it out the window, cuz I didn't know.
I didn't say anything by throwing out, but, but, Stephanie, you and the mayor, y'all came to my home, and we had a great conversation, but then when we get to these meetings, and we ask you something, you seem to like get agitated with us.
Because it's not personal, when I'm, when it's insinuated that the rate increase is a cover-up for misuse of funds, when that statement's been such a broad statement in public on record, without any kind of factual documentation, and then it gets carried away publicly on Facebook and every other social media platform out there, thinking Ms. Manning or shaking your head, yes, but then you know what I'm talking about. And it's so, it is personal, it is personal, out of the eighteen years that I have been here, I have put my life into this job, I live this job, it's not just my job that I go to, I live it, just like my dad lived it when he was here. And I take pride in my work, there's no misuse of funds, but when it's put out there like that, and it spreads like a little cancer out in the public, that hurts my reputation, and yes, I do take that very personal, because that was uncalled for to be said in a public meeting, if there was some kind of issue that was grounded and you had factual basis, I can understand you saying it, but nobody had any kind of basis to say that off the.
Stephanie, my, my basis was what I was, what I was looking at.
But it was.
Your brother, I don't care, but it, it was still your brother.
I didn't make the call, I didn't have anything to do with that, and Steve told you that.
Steve told, he, Steve told me, because it was the police, but Stephanie, if you all were, were, that's why we're gonna have to have, you know, this, this sit-down, because it's a lot of things that I. Because it's a lot of things that I see on there. They are relatives, and it's not supposed to be that way. It's relatives.
I get it, I agree. I told him at the time not to use him.
So, I mean, so, I call it out because it's here. And it's not supposed to be. We're not supposed to be using family. The town is not, not supposed to be paying family members.
I agree.
That is true.
I agree.
So that's what I called out. I call out what I see. I told the mayor, he done paid his daughter. I called him out on that.
So that means we're misusing public funds?
As far as I'm concerned.
That's ethical.
It's unethical. At, at the least, it's unethical.
I told Steve to not use him in the first place. I had nothing to do with it.
So, that's what, see, that's what I'm saying.
And now everybody in the public thinks I'm a thief.
Stephanie, it don't matter.
It doesn't matter if people are calling me a thief or not.
It's public rights, sweetie.
I'm done with this shit. I'm calling.
This call, I'm meeting to the order here. We're getting out of hand here, getting out of personal here. I think we need to go ahead and make an adjournment.
Oh.
Let's hear it in a second, and let's go.
I move that the meeting is adjourned.
I accept it.
Yeah, it so be it. I'll say aye.
Aye.
I dismiss.
And I, I'm responsible for what, what, you know, what's portrayed on this thing. So, if it's out here and it's a play-off, we, we, we do it. That bit's so proud of the fact that she's been on, that she's been doing this for eighteen years. So in those eighteen years, she go, that's my thing. Shame. That's the truth. It's the truth. It's not shaming. Yeah, I mean.
You are elected official.
Yes, I mean.
You're elected to do this.
I mean, it's all the same. It's not, it's no shame that hurt.
Miss Perry?
Only thing what I call out, if it whatever is in our.
What, I'm sorry, what happened? Sorry.
I was talking about, uh, Mr. Lawrence, he was, he came in last week. He, he was talking about, it don't get any better, he's on a resign.
Okay.
I can't, you know.
Well.
But I'm still gonna bring it up at the public meeting.
Because, I mean, all, all this gets out, and, and then, it's just like that, yeah, that boy that, that, that she's been, killed, uh, what was his name, Curry?
She has to take the sign, ethical, trying to never pay every year.
Yeah, but, you know, some of the media had a lot to do with that, because, you know, because. Yeah, because they'll, they'll take one word and spin it and make it look like somebody's evil or bad.
I, I think we gotta come to the, to the place of being responsible for how we as individuals, individuals respond.
Yeah.
I can't, um, be accountable for how you respond. I can only be accountable for how I respond.
The only control gets yourself.
Yes ma'am, and so, I, Ms. um, Carr, um, I respect you. Um, my concern, and I know we out of the media, but this is just, you know, those kind of.
You didn't say any jump run, did you?
Have a good night.
Your night is down, thank you.
As passionate as you are, all of us are, and I'm learning to be, um, about the position, delivery makes a difference. And not, right, right, and from, from any, anyone. And like we were just mentioning, being responsible for how we respond. Now, that, that tension, something is going to have to give.
It is.
Now, again, I'm responsible for me, you're responsible for you. I think if we find a common ground to, to be able to communicate without being offended or offensive, and I know it's very hard to do, because you can't control how people feel and how offended they are. Um, but something is gonna pre, y'all might talk. One way or the other, whether it be you guys, you two, or everybody, but just.
Well, I'm always open to talk. They came to my home, and we had a great conversation. So, but when I get to this council meeting, and when I ask something, it's like everything that we talked about, Stephanie was crying at my house. I felt bad. I hugged her. Me and Stephanie have been knowing each other these nine years. We have never. But, this is my thing. I'm go, I'm gonna be honest. I'm just, that's just me.
Any shit.
When I saw those family members, I know that, that it shouldn't be. So when I brought it out, don't get mad at me, because I'm only bringing it out because it's on the agenda. So, don't, don't get mad at me, just change what you, change, Mr. Friday, you were right. You did not, you did not. Because you knew it was there.
And so I think framing it is, I noticed that, um, we, we paying some family members, how do we rectify it? Versus, okay, but what's the plan versus going back and forth with one another and everybody to hear in the public?
Ask that lady what I did with, with the thing that was, on, on that shirt issue, which was done back in February. What did I do?
Whatever it was.
I paid it back.
Whatever it was.
Thank you, Mr. Friday.
What, whatever, whatever your solution was, or your resolve, present it to the board.
Exactly.
And say, hey, this is, because you leave it again, out, you know, open. Nobody has come back to the table and said, hey, oh, it was rectified or resolved, this is what the mayor did to resolve the issue. Versus just leaving that door open.
Well, at, at that night, at that night, once he mentioned it, I said, I will pay it back.
I, I remember you saying that. However, bringing it back again, because it was a heated discussion. Um, but again, framing it, framing the question and the resolve will eliminate a lot of the back and forth in what looks like a contentious conversation. So I would hope that we would take that moment and think about those things.
You say you paid it back, if you would've said that to me, but I'm glad, I'm glad that you did.
I didn't do it till, till you said something about it.
And that's what, that's all I'm saying. Nothing would be done. It would still be going on if I hadn't have brought it to your attention. You corrected yours. That's fine.
And, and that should have been in the expenditure report so that we could know. So, let, let me just.
It was on, it was, uh, it was posted in February, I think.
Yours was not, no sir. It wa, it wasn't. It's not in here that the mayor.
She's talking about you giving the money back.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought she was talking about whatever, whatever.
You want to, you have something to say to Stephanie?
I, I just helped him out with what you were saying, right?
I, I wouldn't understand what you were saying.
That's fine.
Is that, is that, is that, um, is, is that, she record taking notes for you or something?
No, well, Mayor, I just say, I, I appreciate that you paid, you know, that you paid it back, so that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, because I gave her.
And I'll be honest with you, I have never seen it back on, on, on the, on the, um, expenditure report again, so that's fine.
It has to be.
You know, like I told you, I was gonna take yours.
Yes, so I'm, so I'm so.
But that's, but Mayor, you already know that that's an ethical concern.
For who?
Ethical concern.
Oh, ethical.
You took the ethics training. You already know that, as a mayor. And as the alderman being on board for sixteen years. And so, let me, just to view why they.
And, and, and the reasons.
The mayor, the contingency is coming from you. We can never, I've called you, and when you started, I tried to call and ask you questions, and your answer was no. Property standards, no. I asked you, I tried to call you and talk to you about stuff.
When have you called me?
Yes, at the beginning of the year, in February, when we talked, I asked you about property standards. Your answer was no. I said, can we talk about it at the board meeting? Your answer was, you can, but my answer is still no. You are defensive. You are the one, you're our leader. You're the one arguing with people and going back and forth. That's you. So you think that we're, yes, people see that you're bullying, not because of what we're doing, it's because what you're saying. And tonight, you showed it again. You showed that you were aggressive and bullying.
Against her.
Miss Mayor.
To, to the people out here. To the people out here.
Okay.
To, to Ms. Carr and myself. You talked to Ms. Perry. You talked to Ms. Perry like you're calm and, but you talked to myself and Ms. Carr like aggressively. The people can see it. And that's what I'm asking you. And I told Ms. Perry tonight that I was gonna come in here and try. But you continue to be aggressive, and it's, you're not, you can't be the mayor and, and tell us, I don't remember everything you said. But you, you are the one.
But what happened is, and let me explain how this ha, ha, started, because I made a comment that the council members have not called and made any recommendations about anything that was being said or done on any of these workshop issues. And then, my friend Ms. Carr, uh, 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 came at me and said, "Mayor, you cannot be," or whatever she called him, Mr. Friday, whatever it was, "you can't be blaming this on the," you know, she, uh, she came at me.
Because you weren't blaming us.
I didn't blame anyone. I just said you had not called. And, and gave, you know, you have not given any solutions to the problem.
Mr. Friday, let me, let me ask you this, so, just, you know, so it's me and you. Okay, so, the water, the, the, the water rate and all of this, that's the mayor. What am I, what am I gonna look like trying to call you and tell you how to do your job? When Mr. Horton was here, he brought things to us that we could understand. We had workshops, so that the council, he did his job. It's not our job to say, "Well, I think that the water should be five dollars and fifty cents." That's not what we do. We vote on stuff that you bring to us.
It's, uh, and I did, it's a workshop. I mean, you, you.
But when you, but when you were sitting up there, when you were sitting up, when you were sitting up there, you kept throwing, you're throwing insinuations there because we didn't call you to do this, and we didn't call you to do that. That's not what's up.
What was, what was the email that I sent out to, the message I sent out to all five of y'all?
Didn't I get it? You know, I mean, I got it. But it's your job to bring this stuff to us so that we can vote on it. That's all I, that's what, that's what I'm saying. At least for nine years. That's how.
Yeah, I wanted you to vote on it.
And the four, and the, my last four years, you sat right over there as an alderman, so you know how that works. I mean, I mean, I mean, if I was to call you and tell you, well, I didn't, I don't like what you had did, and I think da-da-da-da-da-da, I'm out of line. I'm totally out of line. Because now, I'm trying to tell the mayor how to do his job. And I'm not gonna tell you how to do your job because I'm out of, I'm out of order. And I don't wanna be out of order. What I want is for you to bring, to bring these things, you know, to the board and, uh, on the agenda. If I don't, if I don't understand something, I will ask. But I promise you. And our next month meeting, when I ask you things, I'm, I'm, I promise you, I'm gonna try to ask in a clear voice, and I'm gonna try to take the base out of my voice.
Well, my intentions, whenever I send the text messages out, so that y'all would be thinking about it. So tonight, that when we got here, there wouldn't be no contention, that y'all would already have some input in. But I didn't have to hear a phone call, or anything about, about, when, when I made a suggestion about just charging for the water that they charged us for, and, and, and leaving the flat redline, I never called. Nobody, got the first call back, said, "Mayor, that's a pretty good idea." Uh, well, what do you think, how can we just doing that, or doing the other? I mean, there was no if, ands, or whys.
You know why? Because we could, that's like walking home. We cannot make decisions like that when we are, we'll be out of order according to the Morrison Act. So no, we cannot just say, yes, we're gonna do that. Mayor, you know that, that's why I gave me that information.
No, no.
And when we, and when we.
You're, you're not correct on that.
What I'm hearing is.
We can't take no votes.
We're not taking a vote, dear.
What I'm hearing, um, I think everybody's saying, is that if the, the door is open to say, what are, what are your ideas? And I, and if this is what you're saying, what are your intention from the text message? This is what I think, what are your ideas, um, concerning it, versus, hey, do y'all agree? Not that you said it. No, I don't, I can't remember the text. I can't remember the text. But I'm, what I'm saying is, if, if you, because I'm a solution-oriented, that's the way my brain thinks. Um, and I, I took the, when you said it, about, um, you didn't hear from us, this, that, and it, you absolutely right. Didn't hear from me. I saw it. I thought about it for a moment, and I did not respond. But my, in my, my normal brain self says, yeah, what are some ideas? What, what can we present? Um, I feel I'm not educated enough, or don't have enough, mm, know in that area. But nevertheless, um, I, I will say that the next time I'm, I'm asked for a suggestion, I'll try to offer up one. Not make a decision, not vote, not, you know what I'm saying?
Yes ma'am.
But just make, make a.
But, but, uh, this is the text that I sent to y'all. It said, "Workshop nine fifteen twenty twenty-five. Items to discuss: corn main, real-time water reading." And that's what, what we're trying to get to doing. Water rate, flat stay as is, thousand gallon decrease a dollar for twenty twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six. Orders for minutes and packets. How questions takes me, will be out of office till noon. Nine eleven ceremony in Bojor, because that's where I was. And so, you know.
And I understood that, Mayor. So when, just me, when, when I, when I, when I read that, I'm thinking that you're just reiterating what we were going to discuss in the workshop. I didn't really think it warrants a reply. I'm thinking that you're just reminding us of what we're going to do, talk about in the workshop. That's why, because you know I don't have no problem replying. I didn't think that you really wanted a reply. But I honestly didn't have any question because you had covered it, you know.
Well, that's, that's what I wanted you to do. I wanted y'all to text me back and tell me what you thought. I mean, I, I can't, I mean, y'all, there's five different individuals here, and I don't, I can't, I don't know how you feel until you tell me.
Yes, but like, but like I say, I didn't, I didn't, me, I just didn't think that.
Oh, I'm going, I'm.
Yeah, I just didn't think that, that you were.
Well, I don't mean to offend any of you, because that's not my intention at all.
Yeah, I just, honestly, I just thought that you were just reiterating what we were going to talk about today. That's what I thought.
Well, y'all, y'all asked for workshops so that we could discuss things, and that's what I was thinking that we're trying to do here to, to figure out how to make this thing work for the town of Benton.
Right, and that's what the workshops, that's what the workshops are for. So if, I mean, if we, if we, if you can not, you know, attack us when we asking questions, even if we looked over it twelve hundred times. I mean, we still have a right to ask questions.
That's right, and, and I have the right to try to explain it to you, but, you know.
Without blessing people out.
I'm standing, and, and I'm trying not to, to be that way, but.
Because, I'm, like Ms. Carr said, if you keep on being aggressive, then expect aggressiveness towards you. I mean, the, the Bible says, if you wanna be a friend, you have to show yourself friendly. And you're not really showing yourself friendly.
Well, I really tried.
I got my two-year-old.
Yeah, I was, it's.
And also, with Stephanie, you have to, um, you've been up, you were sitting right here. How many times did Stephanie say anything in the meetings? No, she didn't. Ms., I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Stephanie did not say anything in the meetings unless she would ask a question. You sat up here in this meetings every, for four years, and Stephanie Harley said anything. And I, I was up here, Ms. Carr was up here, and we both can testify. And so you are the, you are the manager over the town, and you are the person who lead these meetings. Stephanie is not the mayor. You are. And so you have to take control of the me, meetings. And to ask us while we're asking questions about the budget, you've never, you've asked that question before. You, you've.
I didn't ask y'all about that. I didn't ask you the first thing about the budget.
Because I know you've sat here, Mr. Mayor, and you've asked so many questions. Because I know you've sat here, Mister Mayor, and you've asked so many questions to Mayor Carr.
We're gonna be good, um, at the next month meeting, I would know. We just have to show them the night in front.
Yeah.
We gotta simmer down.
That's right. I, you know, I, I'm.
And also to share with another ottoman, uh, to share what another ottoman has shared with you about their, what their, that's, that's important.
What?
To share what another ottoman has said about their position on this board, that's, that's.
I didn't hear that.
You just said that Mister Lawrence wanted, um, resigning? That's what you.
No, no, I, no. He, he, yeah, he came up here and said he wanted to. He, he has not. He wanted to.
Okay.
But we do have town lawyer on it.
What happened with Mister Neil?
Uh, you know, I, I'll let you read the letter of his resignation.
So when this happened?
Because of the last meeting that y'all had, uh, uh.
Y'all, stop standing there. When he had.
Well, he accused the, the council members of, 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 of mis-trolling him, so he resigned.
Oh, where's the letter? Did y'all hear Mister Neil resign and blaming it on the council members?
No.
That's.
I just tried to keep it quiet, that's all.
So when are we gonna get it, um, when we, on August the fourteenth? So, okay, now let me repost it to my girl. Okay, fine. But I mean, okay, when can we do the rest of that?
Well, I've got a, I'm looking for another attorney now.
So he's absolutely.
He gone. He, he came, that, that last council meeting, I, I just, uh, just, just, you know, as it says in the letter, just what it's, it's about asking to.
So.
Now I'd rather go to get a, uh, find someone. I hopefully tomorrow I got an interview with one. And we'll see. A lot of people don't want to move with this, because a lot of people don't, because of the interaction with the public and stuff, the terms they have, they don't, they, they're not, they're not a group situation. They, they might deal with one case at a time, you know.
Yeah, I mean, but if that's, he didn't say that was because of.
Sure he did.
It's more, more about somebody stating something.
I'm trying to talk him out of it. I said, I said, if, if you, you can't let people uh, tell you that, that, they, you know, that, they, you feel like they, you don't trust them and that you're, you're not our personal attorney, you're not her personal attorney. You're brought to the town. And he says, well, that's not the way I take it. I'm not gonna serve if I can't be trusted.
I'm what I'm trusting. It's the, it's.
He didn't say. He didn't give no names.
It seems that, uh, right here that you and him had several discussions. One such courtesy was our conversation today. I guess he was writing this to you in which you indicated after the most recent, so y'all have had more than.
I'm trying to talk him out of doing this.
So how long can the town, um, be without mayor? I mean, be without a, a attorney?
We can't. We, the, uh, the DA, what, what name is it?
Okay.
District Attorney, the DA's office.
I don't know who he's personally.
Well, he didn't say.
Right, but.
And I didn't ask him.
And, and that's fine.
Because, uh, you know, then I would, then that, that, because if, if he had told me, then I would have, it would have angered me and that, and then we already got problems as it is, so.
I'm just saying what we can do as a, I think he was great, um, as a, the town, town council.
You know.
Can we?
Well, I, I can, I can still.
Apology to him, um, request that he, you know, stay on board.
I, I, I don't know what we can do. I, I have talked to him, uh, look, while he was gone, the four weeks that he was gone, uh, to Norway. I, I talked to him back and forth all the time. Uh, I sent text messages and he texted me back, you know, because I had questions to ask him. You know, even though he's out of town, I still need some information, so that he needs to tell me who to find.
So we're gonna let the whole board know on next week?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, when we have the next council meeting.
Okay, draft a letter. It should be heard.
Okay, well, no.
Of something. I mean, because he's very much appreciated. I mean.
Well, and I, hey, I, I told him, I said, and, and some of the text messages that I sent him, I said, I said, as much as you love the law, I cannot believe that you're not staying here and, and, you know, and defend yourself. I mean, it, just like we're talking tonight, you know, all he had to do was, you know, find out who it was and, and, and address the situation, you know, in my opinion, you know, that, hey, uh, you okay with me? I, I cannot, you know, and it may be because of the anger, maybe just people want to bring retardity out of the way. And, and every.
But even if I do, um, at least, i- i- if not to say, you know, we would like for you to come back, just to say we appreciate you.
Oh, yeah.
No, not let him leave in, in that state.
Yeah, no. Well, that's just like, uh, uh, they, uh, we had had a party planned for the other lady that, that, that quit and then she started being ugly. That all out of hand. All right, you ladies be careful going home.